So I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College. Today's Thursday, September 8th, 2022. It is 2:00 PM. We're in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, which is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. And it looks like we have a full slate of members here. The meeting is called to order, and I'll ask Mr. Baker to give the invocation.
Yes, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, again, we're thankful to you for another month and another semester with new students. We're thankful to you for our board members and their time that they have given up. Allow them to redeem that time with their families and their businesses and be with them as they deliberate. Please be with our students. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's stand all leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Ms. Worley, how are you today? Good. Do we have anyone to talk today?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We'll go to Agenda Item Three, President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. Congratulations to Christine Indy and the Upward Bound team on a recent $1.48 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education to support our Trio Upward Bound program. The 100% federally funded program has served countless students throughout the Weatherford College service area. As of August 25th, the W C Foundation offered $604,017 in scholarships for the 2022-2023 academic year, a 55.7% increase from the recent record 387,000 awarded in 2021-2022. The late, great Mr. Bob Glenn, Brent Baker, and J.C. Edwards have collaborated with our generous donors like never before. Kudos to our Student Services Division on a myriad of tasks ranging from orientations to advising to student life activities. The addition of much-needed human resources coupled with our highly effective cross-training has borne fruit. Move-In Day and Welcome Week were fantastic. Thank you to our Student Services for working so hard and caring so deeply about our students. Employee notices. D M A C Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Heidi McDonald, an instructor in Life Sciences, has resigned effective 8/15/22. Kendall Wessel, the director of Network Operations, has resigned effective 9/9/22. Walt Byer has resigned from his coordinator position but will continue as an instructor in public safety effective 10/14/22. And Becky Friar has resigned as Administrative Assistant of Health Sciences effective 9/14/2022. We thank Heidi, Kendall, Walt, and Becky for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update. As of September 6th, we had 5,517 students registered compared to 5,350 students at the same time last year. That represents a 3.1% enrollment increase. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Are there any board questions or comments concerning Agenda Item Three? If not, we'll move to Number Four, Consent Agenda Financial Reports as posted A through F. Is there a motion to approve?
So then...
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Thank you. Any questions or comments, by the way? Hearing none, we'll move to Number Five. Consideration Possible Action Proposals on Betty Jo Graber Jim Re Roofing Project. Dr. Cantrell.
We've rebid the Betty Jo Graber Jim. At this time, we're recommending that we go with Alta Vista Roofing, a total base proposal price for the entire project of $480,000. We have with us today Eric Conville. He's the architect on the project. His office spoke with, did all the reference checking for us. If you have any questions, we got glowing references from them on them, but if you have any questions about detail or anything else, I wish Conville would be more than glad to entertain those. John Stark was on the committee as well as myself.
Any questions or comments by anyone? What was that amount again?
$480,000. I think last time we bided, it was much higher than that, so...
Well, that's good. When do they start? Can they start?
Well, substantial, they're saying price proposals guaranteed through 12 months, substantial completion no later than 45 days after material delivery. And that's where a lot of them get into because it'll be a while, I know. And so we're hoping we'll get on it before about Christmas or spring break. Spring break is probably when they'll commit it. They did have bid into those two or three of the patches that have to be done before then.
Is this an action item at this point?
Yes.
All right. If there aren't any questions or comments, is there a motion to approve and award the bid for $480,000?
I say aye.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Everybody who's in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like that's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. That's great. Thank you. Moving to Number Six, Reports. Academic Student Services Update, President Farmer. Sonography Update, Kelly Staub. That'll be Dr. Farmer and Kelly. Dr. Farmer, you've got the floor.
Thank you, sir. You've been provided an academic and student services update in writing, and highlighted in that is our Jet Grant Drone Training, including our 4D mapping of the drone technology and some updates on some of our various other grants. Last month, you heard from Tanya Peel, and she shared the exceptional work that she and her team have been doing and the national award that they recently received. All of our allied health programs are just performing at truly exceptional levels, and we've got Dean Kathy Boswell with us here today in the back. And we also have Kelly Staub, who is going to talk to us about another award-winning allied health program. And Kelly, we're so proud of you and your team. The floor is yours.
Okay. I'm going to get up here real quick. So my name is Kelly Staub. I am the Program Director for the Diagnostic Medical Sonography Program here on campus. My goal today is just to brag on our program a little bit and let you know what our students do and what they're trained to do once they graduate in our community. So what in the world does a sonographer do? Many times when people think about sonography, they think about happy moments when a sonographer is scanning and expecting mother and telling them if they're having a boy or a girl. But we do so much more than that. We do get to experience those happy moments, but we're also responsible for watching that baby grow throughout the pregnancy and making sure there's nothing that needs to be addressed immediately after the baby is born and things like that. This is actually an 3D image from our OB lab this summer that we took. The mom had the baby, and she emailed us this comparison image, which we thought was really fun, and we love getting things like that. So our program trains students how to scan OB-GYN. They also teach them how to scan abdomen ultrasound. This is an image of a gallbladder, and you can see how, I have this in front of me, you can see how it is black in the center of that, which is the way it should be, but we also see this bright area that has that dark shadow underneath. So that represents a gallstone. Through our program, students learn what normal anatomy looks like and what abnormal anatomy looks like. That way, they can take images and send them to the physician so that they can diagnose what is going on with patients. The last specialty that we teach about is vascular ultrasound. So our students really focus on this during their second year. They learn how to scan every vessel in the body. This is actually an image of a carotid artery, and so you've got your carotid arteries on both sides of your neck. Here are some images from our lab. I wanted to talk about just how, first, how grateful we are for the college helping us update our technology so we can teach our students well. You can see how our lab is set up. We have separate bays, and we have tables and chairs where we can teach our students how to scan ergonomically, which is really important in our field. A lot of sonographers end up having injuries. Tessa Gray is on the bottom to the right. She is our full-time clinical coordinator. Her and I both started in 2016, and we've grown a lot over the past six years, and we love working with the students and we love teaching here and what we do. Our program is nationally accredited through KHEP. So what does this mean for our students? It means that they can sit and take these registries over abdomen, OB-GYN, and vascular, like those images you saw just a second ago, 60 days prior to graduation. This allows them to immediately be able to get jobs after they graduate. Our program is five semesters, so it's 22 months, and we combine class, lab, and clinicals. So every semester, they're learning information in class, they're practicing in lab with us, and then they're going to clinicals and putting that knowledge to use scanning on real patients with sonographers by their side. Here are a few images of our students on campus. We're so proud of them for the determination they showed throughout our program. They will all tell you it's a very academically difficult program. Through their time, they do things for the community, too, that I wanted to brag on. They, every year, will select a child from an angel tree and work together to provide Christmas for them. Last year, they reached out to Freedom House and asked them what supplies they were in need of, and then they came together and bought that for them. They, of course, do, they donate blood and donate food to the food banks and things like that. We see students from all walks of life. We have single mothers who are working through the program, and we have people who have grandchildren or children in elementary school and high school. We love that we get to work with so many different people. The majority of our students are from Texas, but we're noticing more that we're getting, when we interview, we're interviewing people from other states. So this year, we interviewed five different students from different states throughout America, California, Washington, Tennessee, because they're noticing our pass rates and how well our students do, and they are trying to get into our program to move to Texas and attend here. This fall, four months ago, we actually graduated our first international student. She's in the top row of the group picture. Her name is Masaki, and she lived in Japan and made the decision that she wanted to learn ultrasound. She told us she researched ultrasound programs all across America. So she said, "I looked at over 250 programs, and I made the decision that I wanted to go to Weatherford College." She didn't know English at that time, so she actually moved to Canada for a year, learned English, and then moved into our dorms here. She was the first student in her class to pass all three registries, and she accepted a full-time job immediately after graduation as working at a larger hospital in Fort Worth. Our program is a very competitive program, so typically every year we get around 70 applications. We interview the top 35 to 40 students, and then we accept the top 20 students based on a strict point system. Our biggest challenge is going to be related to clinical placement from here to Dallas. There are seven sonography programs that all have first and second-year cohorts. And if you think about the average size of a hospital, you might have 100 to 200 nurses, but you're going to have one to two sonographers. Our crediting body requires that we have one-on-one, one student to one tech. So when I say that hospitals are overflowing with sonography students, we are really having to fight for our slots to give our students the education that they deserve and need. Okay, so how do our students compare to other sonographers and other students across the nation? So I've put up here statistics. These are from the ARDMS website, which is our credentialing body. As you can see, these exams are really tough. The pass rates are not super high, but what we do is really difficult. We are the eyes of the doctor. I try to explain it, as an X-ray tech also, I know that we have to have the skill to learn how to, let's say, work a CT machine or an MRI machine. We have to know how to position the patient and tell it what slices to take, but once we press that button, it's going to move the patient in, and it's going to take the slices exactly where it should. As a sonographer, we scan in real time, but we choose what images the doctor sees. So if you have a liver mass, and I don't take a picture of that liver mass because I don't recognize it, then it might be too late when you find out that you have a liver mass. So we do take what we do very seriously. We expect a lot of our students, and we have very high standards. So I've listed the columns, abdomen, OB-GYN, and vascular. These are what we are accredited in. So 69% of people who sit and take the abdomen exam pass on the first attempt. The overall pass rate for that abdomen exam is 62. I just listed the last four years of information from our students here at Weatherford College. OB-GYN is a little bit higher. First-time pass rate is 79%. Overall pass rate is 73%. Here's our pass rates for the last four years. And then vascular is probably one of the harder ones. First-time pass rate is 68%. Overall pass rate is 61%. And then these are our statistics over the last four years. So we are, these are the statistics that played a role in us being named the number one sonography program in Texas. Also, our job placement rate over the last five years. And I just feel like this information tells students, if you invest these two years, the time and the money, you can know that you're going to be given the information to do well on your exam, and you're going to be able to prove to where you're going to work that you know what you're doing and get a job. So our program's 22 months. After they graduate from our program, their starting pay rate is $30 to $34 on average. We just had a student this past year in May. She took a job making between $38 and $39 an hour. A lot of our students got $8,000 sign-on bonuses and $10,000 sign-on bonuses this year. So we talk about Weatherford College changing lives. We really feel like we get to see that every year. We develop relationships with these students. We see them struggle financially to work and go to school and provide for their families, and we keep in contact with them, and we get to watch them buy houses and cars and just provide a better life with a steady job that they love and they do well at. There's my last statistic, and then I'm finished. So ARDMS, our credentialing body. The majority of sonographers, we all have to take a physics test, and then we have these options to take the other exams like abdomen, OB-GYN, and vascular. So the majority of sonographers are going to take the physics and then one of the specialties, like physics in abdomen or physics in OB-GYN. So they have an article on their website. I wasn't supposed to click on that yet. Pretend like you didn't see it. They have an article on their website that says only 4% of sonographers in America are triple-registered. So that means they are taking three or more of those registries. So 4%, and now you know our number. So our number over the last five years is 94% of our students are taking and passing all three of those registries. So when they go to the workforce, them being triple-registered and also the clinical sites knowing that they're from Weatherford College, they are very highly favored. We have a great reputation in their skill and in their knowledge. These are just some fun pictures of activities that we do, and then I just wanted to thank you for inviting me and see if you'll have any questions.
Ms. Staub, thank you for that report. That's amazing. Your statistics are just unbelievable.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I have a question. Do you have medical institutions that come to you asking for your graduates?
Oh, yeah. We get email, I got an email today and yesterday that they're asking, "Do you have any graduates who are looking for a job?" Most of the time, all of our graduates have job placement within a few weeks to a month. That might be some of the students love working PRN because they'll get a higher pay rate, so they will apply at multiple different places. Yes, we will have people that reach out to us.
Right.
And even some that reach out and ask, "Can we have your students?" You know, we hear great things about your program. When we go to clinical sites, the clinical sites will tell us, "We just love your college, and your students are phenomenal and keep doing what you're doing."
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Farmer?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to recognize not only Ms. Staub but her entire team. You don't get to be ranked number one in the great state of Texas by accident. These team members have worked exceptionally hard and wrapped our students in our culture of caring and ensured that they're successful. So thank you so much, and please pass on our thanks to the rest of your team.
Anything else under Number Six? Dr. Farmer?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Seven, Agenda Item Seven, Future Agenda Items or Meetings. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be discussing the Access and Affordability Report, the CLEAR Act, and looking at sealed bids on color and web printing.
Any questions or comments about Number Seven? If not, we'll move to Number Eight, Announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. There are several activities coming up. I'll be quick. It is a busy month before our next board meeting as far as activities. We had volleyball last night. We have several volleyball matches coming up at home. We do have the Presidential Luncheon. That is at the Alcach Fine Arts Center on the 22nd of September. The festivities will start promptly at 11:50 AM. We have our National Championship Rodeo Celebration. I'll be in this room on September the 27th. We start at 4:00 that afternoon. Wise County Night, College Night for the High Schoolers of Wise County. That'll be September the 29th at our beautiful campus there in Wise County. W C Alumni Rodeo at the Parker County Sheriff's Posse Arena, October the 1st. That's at 7:00. And then our 22nd Annual Weatherford College Foundation Golf Tournament, Canyon West, October the 6th. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions or comments to Mr. Baker on announcements? We'll move to Number Nine on the Agenda Close Session at this time, and the posted agenda is under nine on back page two, A B C. We're going to close the public meeting and open the next closed session in about five minutes in the meeting room behind our location. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
3:35, I'm going to call the board back into public session and we'll pick up the agenda at, agenda item number 10, consideration possible action real property. There is no action to take or any items to act on in 10, so we'll move to 11, consideration possible action appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, dismissal of a public officer or employee. And there's no action or any action to take there, so we'll move to number 12, consideration possible action election of board of trustee officer. That's, there's no action to take there today. And so we will move to number 13, is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.